See, I knew, I knew, I knew it was God. That's why I didn't say it was me.
This time we'll follow the shadows coming. Board of Commissioners meetings to order. Everybody can try to collect allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Marks?
Yeah, if you feel moved, rise and bow your head, we'll say the invocation. Well, Father, we are so thankful that you've given us the opportunity to come here today in your name and make decisions that are gonna hopefully impact people in a positive way. We ask that your hand guide us in every decision we make and that it may glorify you. Through Christ's name we pray, amen.
All right, this time we'll move to roll call.
Commissioner Nate Master?
Here.
Commissioner Coscarelli?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Holthausen? Chairman Root? I mean, whoops, sorry. Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Chairman Root?
Here.
Now, we'll move to the approval of minutes. The approval of minutes for the May 11, 2007 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion of support? Support. Do we have any discussion on the minutes? All of those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I will move to approval of bills. Commissioner Marks?
Yes, I move to approve invoice edit reports dated 5/16/17, the amount of $196,346.39. From 5/17/2017, in the amount of $1,427.05. Also from 5/17/17, $118,196.03. From 5/23, in the amount of $91,908.96. Also from 5/23, in the amount of $985,884.73. From 5/24, in the amount of $1,663,956.29. Also from 5/24, in the amount of $2,827,763.95. From 5/31, in the amount of $114,092.75. Also from 5/31, in the amount of $334,524.24. Also from 5/31, in the amount of $130,989.48. From 6/7/2017, the amount of $220,775.05. Also from 6/7/17, in the amount of $449,740.86. From 6/14, in the amount of $120,154.47. And from 6/14 as well, in the amount of $114,257.16. And two wire transfers, one from 5/19, in the amount of $224,122.72. And from 5/30/17, in the amount of $203,933 even, as provided by the Clerk's Office and to authorize that warrants be drawn from the Treasury for the same.
Or? Do we have a motion of support on the payment of the bills? Do we have any discussion on the bills? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Coscarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Nate Master?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
All right, this time we'll move to the first opportunity for the public to address the board. We're gonna ask that the comments be kept professional. No name calling, no insults, no comments towards the boards or any other elected officials. Just keep it clean, state your point, be professional. And please respect the positions that are here. We appreciate that, thank you. We'll move on to Melissa Shute. She's here, she's gonna give us a brief kinda update on the SADA. We did get the paperwork on it Tuesday, I believe, from Bill, the Veterans Office, just about the other county, some of the areas of the county that's not being represented by SADA and the costs. But I'll let her explain that.
Well, thank you very much for your time today. I feel like maybe the horse got put before the carriage a little bit, or the carriage got put before the horse a little bit here, so I'm kinda planning catch-up, 'cause I didn't know you guys had gotten something from the Veterans Affairs Office regarding the transportation solutions. So I just wanted the opportunity, first of all, you all look fairly new to me. I haven't been to a Commissioner meeting since I started with SADA in 2008, so I see a lot of new faces around the table. My name is Melissa Shute again, Mobility Manager with SADA. For those of you that don't know, that stands for Chiwasi Area Transportation Agency. We are the authorized public transportation provider for Chiwasi County. We were created in 1999 under Act VII, and it was a collaborative effort with Don Trapp. Everybody remember Don Trapp? Quite the legend from this area. He was with RASD, he kinda spearheaded it along with the City of Owasso, City of Karana, City of Duran, City of Perry, and Caledonia Township, as well as local health and human service providers such as the ARC and SCOLA, the Council on Aging. At the time, everybody had their own vehicles and they were doing their own thing. And so they kind of thought, why are we all doing our own thing? That's how SADA was created, was as a coordinated effort, if you will, to combine services. And then, of course, be able to provide more services because the agencies weren't gonna be duplicating and riding their buses right alongside each other on the same road. So that is SADA. You have a brochure there with SADA. There's some limitations, obviously, with SADA. It is only Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 6:00, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with extended hours until 10:00 p.m. in the Owasso-Karana area. Does not work, or does not run on holidays, weekends, doesn't go out of county. So there was a lot of needs that still existed. And then to just back up a little bit, SADA is funded with federal, state, and local dollars. The local dollars are, you have a map. I think you got this map, I'll hand it around again, but I think you got this map from Bill Archer as well. That map is showing you all of the townships and cities in Chiwasi County. What happened is, because we are not a countywide authority at this stage in the game, and haven't been since created in 99, we have to, when it was decided that local funding was gonna be necessary, we had to decide how to do that. So each township and city has the option to participate or not participate. And what that means basically is, are they gonna financially support SADA? The pink, being my favorite color, are the ones that participate. Those are the ones that do provide an annual contribution. And how many of you live in the City of Owasso? You see it on your taxes, what, eight, nine dollars? Some areas do it by general funds, so you can do it one of two ways, as a village or as general funds. You can see, though, the yellow areas, those townships have yet to participate. It's not to imply that they've been asked and just declined, maybe they've just never been asked and their residents haven't expressed a need yet for the service. But you can see that there are areas and needs that still exist in the county. So in 2008, when I was hired on as Mobility Manager, my job is to not, my job is to know what's going on in the county. What do we have for resources? What do we have for needs? How can we coordinate our services better so that we're not running two vehicles down the road at the same time? How can we take some funding streams that come into our local community and coordinate them to increase ridership, and again, eliminate that duplication? In the process, we also decided that we wanted to help meet some of the needs that wouldn't necessarily be realistic to put on a bus. And so that's where Transportation Solutions comes in. And you have a brochure there for Transportation Solutions as well. That's the program that I administer. It's a division of SADA, it's not any separate entity. Transportation Solutions is 24/7, 365 days a year. And when we created that, that was very intentional, because that's the same level of freedom that I'm sure each of you take for granted when you get into your vehicle to come to this meeting today, or craving a McDonald's cheeseburger at midnight and wanna go get it. So that was the purpose of establishing 24/7, 365 days a year, anywhere that they need to go. The fares are based on where you live, when you're in county. And then the fares, if we're traveling out of county, which is just gonna be on Transportation Solutions, then that's based on where we're going.
And this is for even the non-participating?
Correct, right. Well, obviously, yeah, the non-participating had, we knew there was a need there because they're not receiving the SADA bus, correct. So, yeah, since 2008, the non-participating townships have received, their residents have received service and they haven't had to pay a dime up to this point. What has happened with Transportation Solutions and why I think Bill Archer wanted me to come here, I was asked to come here today, and I guess he provided you with a packet is, the Veterans Affairs Office relies on us, contracts with us, Transportation Solutions, to take people to the veterans' facilities in Saginaw, Ann Arbor, out of the county. And we have what's called the New Freedom Grant. It's a federal grant, it's 50% federal, 50% local. And that's what funds the services through Transportation Solutions. So Transportation Solutions does not receive any other local funding except for, none of the governmental, the township or city funding, it's kept separate, okay? And that was part of, that was intentional too, because then we could provide service to the non-participating residents and there not be any implications of, why am I a City of Owasso resident paying for somebody that's in Rush Township? The grant, up to this point, we've been utilizing, because there wasn't a lot of money to ask of individuals or entities for that matter, we've been using what's called in-kind or contributive services. So it's not that we've lost the grant, it's that the money we were using as our local share was in-kind, and we now, based on a federal audit, have to back that out. So we can use it to bring the money into the community, but when it comes to actual reimbursement, we have to back it out, so we're only getting reimbursed on actual expenses. So that's how we lost about 70% of what we were doing. Because we were, and when I say in-kind, here's an example of in-kind. I have a gentleman that dispatches in my office, he is paid by AARP Senior Employment Program. That's a federally funded senior training program. We don't have to pay him, but we reap the benefits of his services in our office. So I was using that hourly wage towards that in-kind match, towards that local match. I can use it now to pull in the dollars, but I can't use it to get the reimbursement. So that's where the VA Office is affected, because we can, because we had to reduce or cut services, what Transportation Solutions now has to do is, we're no longer, as of July 1st, gonna be providing service for those non-participating residents. So I want you to look at that map and really see what that means for our county residents. They just lost their rides. We have a gentleman from Burns Township that is dialysis three days a week. A lady that we were transporting for work says, "I don't, I think I'm gonna lose my job." So there's some big implications involved in here, because we have, you know, Transportation Solutions kinda picked up that slack, if you will, of those, that yellow area and that going out of county need, which exists. I mean, we do, 70% of what we do is going out of county. So, and then the other service reduction is, the residents in the pink areas, it's only gonna be for medical until I can find or sustain additional funding to restore our services. There's a little bit of a silver lining, I think, that has kind of come out of this, because we've already had, when I was calling passengers that, to tell them they no longer had a ride, I also told them, you have elected officials that represent you. Call them and tell them that there's a need in your respective township. And gave them the information of who their supervisor and information is. So we have had Burns Township and Woodhall Township already give us a call and say, what is it gonna take? And then there was a formula, SADA uses a formula for how to determine what your municipality is gonna pay. It's 50% ridership, 50% taxable value. So the first year, most of these municipalities, it's dirt cheap, because it's the first year. So for example, like Rush Township, if they came on board next year, where our fiscal year starts October 1st, it would cost them about $5100 for the year. Because the ridership, the formula of ridership and taxable value, that first year is always relatively cheap. So, you know, we are seeing some of our townships and township supervisors contact us and inquire of what this is gonna mean, because if they become participating, not only is it gonna open up Transportation Solutions, but it's also then gonna open up the SADA bus service as well. So I think just today was, here's kind of what happened, here's who we are, here's where we've been, here's where we're going. I think long-term goal would be to eliminate that map and just say we're a countywide service. That's long-term. I understand the implications of that, but the climate is there. Anybody that we're talking to is very receptive to the fact that if tomorrow, Mr. Root, you could not drive, how are you gonna get to work? How are you gonna get to the doctor's office? How are you gonna get to your father's house on Sunday to spend Father's Day with your family? This stuff matters. Transportation is across the board, it affects employment, it affects health, our health care, being able to get to preventative care versus ER care, because we're not going to the doctors because we don't get there. Education, quality of life, all of these great events that we have in Chiwasi County. I mean, I love this county and I love the City of Owasso, I love living here. But sometimes on Saturday mornings, when I'm walking down to the farmer's market, I think, there's people that can't get down here. And the baby boomers are gonna continue to age, and I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. And if we don't have a community that is connected and allows them to be able to get where they need to go, we are going to lose them. So that's kind of a little bit of my soapbox. I'm passionate, I don't know, it just, it means a great deal to me. When I get in my car, I don't take that for granted anymore. It's a privilege, it truly is. And there's residents that have never been able to have that privilege, and there's some residents that are aging out and can no longer drive. I had a lady, when I first started at SADA, told me, "If I can't drive, I might as well die." And I thought, no, no, we should live in a community that doesn't have a person feel that way. We should have, because you'll see, in Transportation Solutions, we're not just talking about getting people there on buses. We're very creative in what we're looking at. We're looking at all of our assets, our neighbors. We have a volunteer driver program that we utilize to get all, most of our out-of-county trips are with volunteer drivers. That's accessing our neighbors. We have church buses and vehicles that sit there all week, except for Wednesdays and Sundays. We utilize them, those are my efforts, those are my coordination efforts. So when I talk about public transportation and making sure that people are connected and going places, I'm not just talking about a bus. And I'm thankful that we live in, that SADA's Board of Directors embraces that concept as well. So if you have any questions for me, though, I'll get up, I'll back it up a little bit, rein it in, and just thank you for that. And if you have any questions specifically about what Mr. Archer has tied you, or how you might be involved, and there's groups that are starting to come back into light, if you will, picking up some momentum that are advocacy, transportation advocacy groups that are coming back into fruition and started to meet again, because they wanna see, again, the needs still existed even before these cuts happened, it just made the landscaping worse when the cuts happened. Okay?
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Is there another time to ask a question? Sure. Just a couple quick, quick clarified questions. Thank you, Ms. Shute, for coming and spending time with us today. So you mentioned that in-kind can be used to bring the money here, but it can't be used for reimbursement. You lost me there.
You know, it loses me too, honestly. I did all the research on the federal grant and I still don't understand it. The best I can say is that people change at the federal level, and so the new person who did the audit is interpreting legislation differently than the person that had allowed us to do this since 2008. And so now they're saying we can't do it.
So just what I know, I mean, the example you used of the AARP position, that's federal dollars, so normally you can't use federal dollars to match federal dollars. So I just wondered, is there cases where you can use other in-kind contributions that aren't supported with federal grants in other areas to, you know, it's usually non-federal cost, is how it's described, so I just wondered.
Well, and actually, there's a federal initiative called CCAM, which is the Coordinating Council on Access and Mobility, that says we can leverage other federal dollars. There's 62 federal funding streams that come down into the local community that can fund transportation. And at the federal level, they want us to coordinate these efforts. And so I just don't understand, you know, what, why we can't. Honestly, they lost me when they said I could use the in-kind to bring the money in, but not when I get the reimbursement. Then it's only actual expenses. And I think it's just a change in interpretation.
Just one final question, you used the example of Burns Township, and the first year is based on taxable value of ridership.
Yes.
The first year might be $5100, because you don't have any idea what ridership is. What is it likely, you know, and rough estimate of year two, what it would go up to?
It's hard to say, because, so for example, in 2009, when we had a group of residents and grassroots, some grassroots advocacy happened here in the county, we actually added Venice Township, Vernon Township, Bennington Township, Middlebury Township, Chiwasi Township, as a result of those efforts. But Chiwasi Township and Middlebury Township both backed out after the first year. Middlebury, it was ridership, they didn't have the numbers, the people weren't using the service. Maybe it could've been marketed better, I don't know. Chiwasi Township had the ridership, but then said they didn't have the dollars. So very hard to predict. I mean, I can look at just the ridership, because when we talk about ridership in that formula, they're actually talking about ridership on the SADA bus, not on Transportation Solutions. So none of the rides that I've been doing actually count towards that. So it's so minimal, that first year, very hard to predict, though, what it would be.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll move to the next, Christine Lestraico.
Can I yield to Gerald Lestraico, please?
Yes, Gerald Lestraico.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about one of the agenda items regarding the Clerk's Office, and make clear at the outset that I was not asked by Fairline Wilson to come and address the issue, but I don't subscribe to any newspapers. And, but this morning I saw an Argus from, well, yesterday's Argus Press, and I was surprised to see that the Commission was moving up an issue to remove two personnel from the Clerk's Office, doing payroll and accounts receivable and whatever else, and transferring them over to Commission, Supervision. And when I read that, I was, I was really quite surprised. I called Fairline and I asked her, "What do you know about this?" She said, "Well, it came up as an agenda item last Friday." So that's how much notice apparently was given. So, you know, raise a lot of questions in my mind, have these discussions been going on in Open Meetings Act? How much input has the county clerk been allowed, since she is the elected official, countywide as county clerk? So how much opportunity has she had to bring in Michigan Association of Counties to share their experiences with similar issues perhaps? Or the Clerk's Association for the State of Michigan? And when I saw that, I think there was $91,000 going through, whatever it is, ADP, I wondered, you know, I thought about that, because to my knowledge, when I left the bench as of January 15, county personnel had not received any pay raises for at least 10 years. And if that's changed since I left, then that's good. So I wondered, you know, another question I had in my mind was, well, gee, if that's the case, then $91,000 going to an outside firm taking this work out of the Clerk's Office. I also wondered in my mind, since the Clerk, those people don't perform only payroll and accounts receivable, they do desk, counter duty for the public, coming in on all kinds of issues. As you know, it's not a big office to start with in terms of being staffed by personnel. I also wondered, in my mind, not only what input the county clerk has had in discussions, and again, whether there's been discussions in open meetings, open to the public, and what public input there's been, and those types of things. I also wondered, having been Corporation Counsel for this body and for elected officials for a lot of years, you know, about other things. I've never been aware that the county board can defund during the year positions that are budgeted for each of the departments. That's not been my experience in terms of advice to the board, or in any board that I've ever worked with, or been working with when I was even on the bench, that the Commission had the legal authority to defund and take away positions, budgeted positions during the year that those positions are budgeted. So those are some of the concerns that I had when I read that, you know, this is going outside. I just wanted to share sort of an analogous, what I think is an analogous situation going way back. I came into county government in, let's see, 1972, as an Assistant Prosecutor. And so I go back, working with clerks from that time, with Clark Kingsbury, Alma Thatcher, who really, as far as I'm concerned, wrote the book on how a clerk is supposed to work and how the relationship is with the rest of the county bodies, and all the way up through Ms. Bray. So when I was, I was appointed to fill a vacancy in the Prosecutor's Office in September of 74. So, and you'll remember, in November of 74, was the first election after Watergate. We had five Commissioners at that time, and in that election, three Democrats were elected, two Republicans. I don't want this to be a partisan thing, because it's not, but the story, I think, in terms of institutional memory, is important in terms of an analogy. So shortly after January or February of 75, and again, I'm a new prosecutor, I mean, what do I know? You know, I'm 29 years old and, so, but I was Corporation Counsel as well as Prosecutor. We're two hats. And we tried lawsuits on behalf of the county. And so three Democrats came into the Prosecutor's Office, there were two Republicans. The Republicans were Jake Surbeck and Dr. Leon Montague. The Democrats were Marvin Joe Stevens, Curly Hasselbring, and John Austin. So the three Democrats came into the Prosecutor's Office and said, "You know, Jerry, you got a lot of work on the criminal side of the docket here, so we're going to help you out, we're gonna remove Corporation Counsel from Prosecutor's Office and give it to outside, an outside attorney." Well, I didn't know a lot, I thought I was pretty much green behind ears, but I think I was astute enough to see what that was all about. The new majority wanted to control the person who wrote opinions, and that was going to an attorney who was a Democrat, so it was gonna be that type of system. an attorney who was a Democrat, so it was going to be that type of system. I objected, both to the three, they had there and then had meetings subsequently, and there were meetings, there were a lot of meetings, and Jake Surbeck and, and Dr. Montague also objected, saying, gee, you know, why do this? And my view was that as soon as you take something out of an office that's already performing and performing competently, then that new department is going to do nothing but grow. So that's where the standoff was with the commissioners and myself, three of the commissioners. At the same time, I was representing Sheriff Moils in the county in a federal lawsuit that was tried over in District Court in Flint. And you can check the records from that timeframe of nineteen seventy-five, it was Osmer v. Moils. Mr. Osmer was an individual who was a special deputy and then misused his badge on some rental aid he had, and they got back to the sheriff and the sheriff took his badge away and said, you're done. So he sued the sheriff from the county. So they assigned the case to an assistant prosecutor, R. Scott Ryder and myself, and the case went to trial over in federal district court in Flint, jury trial, and Dr. Montague actually came and watched the trial. And the jury came back with a verdict, no cause of action against the county or the sheriff, we prevailed, not a cent was expended on behalf of the county because we're corporation counsel in-house. Dr. Montague went back to the board, next meeting, of prosecutor's office with the prosecutor, and that's remained to the same to the present, although I don't know to what extent you're using outside counsel, but prosecutor then and now, that pay structure was included to pay the prosecutor for wearing both hats. So when I looked at, when I read the story this morning, I thought, gee, you know, there's a lot of similarities to what's going on. Is this, you know, is this a power struggle, is this a power grab by the Board of Commissioners? Why is that necessary? I worked with this lady when she was office manager for the friend of the court, she's a very competent individual. The Argus, for some reason, dragged up some stuff from a January story of deputies escorting fired people back into the office, I don't know how that's pertinent to the present issue, but, you know, these are some of the things that I thought about when I read the story. How much public input has there been? How much opportunity has this county clerk been given to bring in some outside views from, again, Michigan Association of Counties? The article mentioned only nine hundred counties do what we're doing. I don't know if that's been verified, and I don't know what the history is in all those counties, I'm sorry?
That came from MAC directly.
From MAC, okay. And I don't know how those all came about, when they came about, why, and to what extent the board and those various jurisdictions tried to defund a clerk for budgeted positions that were budgeted for the year two thousand seventeen. Those are some of the issues that if this board has not looked at, I think ought to be considered. I, I really think the board ought to delay this decision until there's ample opportunity for all views to be aired and for the decision informed to be made relative to, is this needed? If the clerk, let's say, you know, let's assume that the clerk can legally and validly be defunded during, in the middle of a budget year, how is she going to perform? What's that like, one person? If there's two taken away? So, to me, you know, with all due respect, and again, I don't want to stand here and boast that my experience is the best in the world, but I have a lot of experience with county boards and with elected officials, having not only represented this board in lawsuits, but also in working with the board since, you know, nineteen eighty-five, when I took the bench, and worked with Democrats and Republicans, and always had a good working relationship. The other question that's raised is why, if this is such a timely issue to bring up now, why wasn't it brought up previously when, before Ms. Wilson took, took her position? If this is such an immediate thing to bring up now, why didn't it come up? I think three of the commissioners on the board today were on the board, maybe two.
Gary's absent.
Were on the board before. So those are some of the concerns I had when I read the article. Thank you.
Matthew Shepherd.
Let's go along with George's explaining with outsourcing of powers. We've got a decision made by Toski's law firm on the veterans issue, when it could have been made in-house, knowing, knowing the laws that were present, or utilizing veterans committees throughout the state. I really don't think that this investigation, if you guys are going to anticipate in July, is going to be a thorough investigation. We need to have somebody outsourcing that as well, maybe the Attorney General.
All right, now we'll move to committee reports. Anyone has anything to report right now about community mental health? Commissioner Brock.
Gosh, I don't have anything outstanding to report, and we are voting on a resolution this evening that, to keep our community mental health in our community and run by our community, our county locally versus a state run. Been some discussion in regards to a pilot program in Camp County, and so we'll see where that goes, but as we stand to this point, we're in support of maintaining local control. We'll see how it all goes this evening.
What about Council on A, GM, B, AAA?
B, AAA, I've only been to one of their meetings. The last meeting actually was a conference call, which is interesting. Nothing, nothing outstanding there. They did just call me today and wanted me to attend an hour and a half, seven hours following, two hours standard meeting that they have, so I'm not sure exactly what that was, that's going to entail.
Planning?
Could you guys speak on? Sure. Because it is hard to hear.
Planning continues to discuss the wind turbines, along with other zoning issues, of course, but the turbine issue continues to be a hot topic, and this coming planning commission meeting will be on setbacks. The bulk of the discussion will be on setbacks, as we continue to take piece by piece of the ordinance and whether it's going to be modified or not, we'll see how it all turns out.
First, our Casparelli, about solid waste trails.
Yeah, this intended meeting, first meeting, since I've been appointed to solid waste committee was last month, it was a good meeting, well represented, we had the chair here last night, highlighting a couple of the issues that were discussed there at Lang. Of course, one of those is the ability for them to keep providing recommendations to the commission on how that seventy-five thousand dollars is allocated related to recycling here in the county, so fully support, you know, their efforts here, and it sounds like most of us, if not all of us here, do as well. Regarding the Michigan Trailway Authority, I arrived late after five o'clock and Clinton County Courthouse was locked and I could not get access to the basement where the meeting was being held, so somewhat embarrassed, but hey, I missed last meeting after driving all the way to St. John's Church, so.
Buildings and grounds?
Buildings and grounds, parks and recreation. Last meeting was held up to Chi-Town Park instead of here in Chambers, just kind of looked at over everything that was going on and seen all the improvements and stuff. Just dealing with, just moving forward, trying to keep the wrongs going, everything going. There, through buildings and grounds, buildings and grounds, see, we're trying to get some more people in. The person that we had moved to full-time basically just couldn't handle the stress and there's just too much, there you go. Never can get enough done, never can be in enough places at the right time, it was just way too stressful, basically the reason she left. Felt very, felt the departments very under manned, overwhelming, and it was just more than she wanted, so hopefully we can fill that, make it, see the full-time people for the summer to try to make it so that everything can be done in a reasonable time, and just go from there.
Commissioner McMaster?
Well, I've been to two meetings outside the county, one to Kepala Community Services meeting about two weeks ago. They are over budget, so they are cutting some staff to get back on track by September. Some of this is, some camp money fell through, there was a disagreement, Board of Water and Light, and some money that was going to be coming. So they think they can be back on board or back on track by September. One of the, there's a lot of things they do, they do head start, and there's a lot of books they distribute for, for reading, they offer emergency money for, for housing and heating and stuff. One of the big projects is food distribution, they have a big warehouse where food is shipped out to all four counties. Some individuals get it monthly, if you're senior, you get a quarterly if you're not. There's fear with the new administration and cuts to the farm bill, that that program may go away, the money that, the, the, the federal government buys up certain commodity products and then, and then it makes its way down to, to like CACS. If that's the case, then they're already kind of figuring if they lose that, that program goes away, they'll have to move out of the building that they're in, because the building they're in, like, nine-tenths of it's the warehouse to house all the food, so they'll be out of the food distribution business, so they'll just go to a smaller location or maybe one of the, one of the satellite CACS offices. Went to Michigan Works meeting over in La Pire about a month and a half ago, big news there, they downsized the Flint office, because people didn't feel safe going to downtown Flint to have services provided. They rented a facility down in Fenton off of Owen Road, which will serve, now will serve Genesee County, but it'll draw people up from, from south of there, and actually, even for Chiwasi, it'll be closer for residents of your district over in Pyron, it's quicker for them to get over to that shopping plaza on Owen Road than what it is up, up here in Owasso, so. Kind of, kind of in an effort to help, help their, their customers or clients and save some money, so. So those are the two outside. Would you say part two?
All right. Ninety-one-one, there's not been a meeting, but the building is coming along, being framed, looking pretty good, I can have some pictures, if anyone wants to see it, or if anyone wants to go to stop in there whenever they're by there, I'll let you walk through and take a look, and that's coming along. I did go to the next Michigan Development Corporation meeting, our I-69 corridor, there wasn't really, it was all a lot of renewals on insurance, continuing agreements with local entities that are involved, they did have their audit, it was a clean, good, clean audit, they only have about ninety thousand, so it was, and there's no, there's no dispersments, it's all just what comes in, so it's not really, or maybe it all just is dispersments and there's no, no money that really, I don't know, confused. But it was all right, that was, they did have the DC flight over, Justin Horvath from our area did attend, he went to DC, there's a coalition of people that attended to kind of beef up the support from the federal level for I-69, all the way from Texas, all the way to Port Huron. They got the support, they met with every one of our representatives for all the counties that are involved, every congressman, and they actually had FaceTime with all of them, got to meet with all of them. They met with Senator Stabenow and Senator Peters, they got to talk a little with them. I think they even got one of the congressmen to join the committee that's going to be taking up the I-69 corridor and development, so he was, he was a congressman, he was interested in joining in on that, so I guess that went over pretty well. The biggest attention right now, they're focusing obviously, is the Mexico, United States border, so there's not, not as much action up here in Michigan, but they're trying to get it to shift up here for a little bit more funding. Other than that, I think that's about it. Does anyone else have anything else, or any other subcommittees? All right, now we'll move into committee of the whole, Commissioner Brock.
I motion to approve the minutes of the June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen committee of the whole meeting.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion on minutes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move to economic and fiscal development, Commissioner Casparelli.
Mr. Chairman, item A, I move to authorize amendment to the Chiwasi County zoning map for property located in section seventeen of Perry Township, that is personal ID zero one four dash one seven dash two zero zero dash zero two three dash zero one, from eighty-two, agricultural production slash rural residential to B-three highway service, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
Item B, I move to authorize the release of the lien upon payment in full and mortgage discharged from the rehabilitation improvements in the property located at one four zero three Molina Avenue in Owasso, authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Same. Motion passes.
And final item, I move to approve the minutes of the June twelfth, two thousand seventeen Economic and Fiscal Development Committee meeting.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to county finance and administration, Commissioner Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to authorize the friend of the court to enter into a near-local agreement for IT services with G2G for credit card processing services to be executed by Chief Judge Wardell Clarkson.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion? Pretty much covered it throughout the week. Do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Yes. Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
No.
Commissioner Casparelli?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item B, I move to authorize the Chiwasi County Treasurer's Office to contract for a non-employed temp at an hourly rate range from twelve dollars and ninety-nine cents to fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents for a period of no more than one hundred and twenty days to be paid from one zero one dash two five three dash eight zero four treasurer contracts and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item C, I move to authorize the Chiwasi County Clerk's Office to hire a deputy circuit court clerk to fill a vacancy at pay grade three on the RI salary schedule with a salary range from twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars to thirty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Please.
Yes. Motion passes.
Item D, I move to authorize Buildings and Grounds to hire a full-time maintenance worker one to fill a vacancy at pay grade three on the RI salary schedule with a salary range from twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars to thirty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item E, I move to authorize Building and Grounds to hire two part-time temporary employees up to thirty hours per week, not to exceed one hundred and twenty days, with a pay range from ten dollars, seventeen cents per hour to twelve dollars and forty-four cents per hour with no fringe to $12.44 per hour with no fringe benefits except those required by law, to be paid from line item number 101-691-703 and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, is there any discussion on this motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item F, I move to authorize budget amendment number 17.4 to increase the capital outlay budget for central dispatch 911, utilizing funds from their savings account to provide for costs related to new generation 911 software and building improvements, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion? Just a quick question, is that any of Chairman the Dollar moment, I don't recall seeing that, or did we discuss that and I just forgot? It's probably in the back, it ran in front of me now. Do you know the figure off the top of your head? Probably not.
I just wonder why, we wouldn't normally have a figure identified in this one as we do with the other.
It's like 40. Usually the budget in this one's usually put in the pack and you just see the amount, and you just pass the estimate.
Okay.
Ready?
Was it 43?
I'll have to go get it, I don't have it.
Wait.
Excuse me, I just thought, speaking system with the other items could include a specific loss, we just balance it.
No, we'll get it, but maybe you're right, she's sorry. Okay, that sounds right. Thank you.
Yep.
Roll call, anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item G, I move to authorize the payment of $21,309.50 representing 50% of the 2017 Chiawassee County PA 2 of 1986 Cobalcon Convention Facility Tax received on April 28, 2017, requiring board approval to mid-state health network as required under the Public Act, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item H, I move to authorize a renewal of MMRMA insurance coverage for the period of June 30, 2017 through July 1, 2018, at a cost of $381,742 even, to be paid from the budgeted line item number 101-954-910, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion? Another roll call, please.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item I, I move to authorize the contract with ADP for annual payroll HR support and management tools in the amount of $91,552.88 to be paid from 101-172-804 administration contracts and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion?
I would just like to make one comment here, I appreciate Judge Mestrik's comments relative to this, and I had conversations with the clerk, and I've committed that going forward, assuming this is approved, we should continue to monitor the capacity in that office and the services provided, and if those services are diminished as a result of the shift of these two individuals, that we would be willing to have a conversation about how we might address any capacity shortages, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board if that exists, so, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anything else?
Chairman Root?
It's just big because I can't see. This is something that I wrote prior, I mean after thinking, and I just wanted to clarify something from Commissioner Cascarelli's question to me on Monday, and because I was a little taken bad, I just didn't understand maybe what he was asking, when he was asking, I'm just going to read what I wrote. When asked if moving payroll in the county's payable would affect my functions as clerk, I interpreted that to mean statutorily. Statutorily, no, it does not. When it comes to the service providing to the Chiawassee County residents, yes, it does. With not knowing when this is to take place, removing two people from my office would greatly impact this in addition to the fact that they are doing the training with me and the new hire that I have scheduled to start July 3. There is no possible way the vital records office can function with just one employee. In understanding how the vital records side functions, payroll and accounts payable are not the only responsibilities of the two individuals in question. Those responsibilities are rotated from week to week. The job duties are not necessarily full-time. It's the additional duties of functioning with the counter and the phones that make this job full-time. On another matter, I'd like to just address the fact that Judge Clarkson brought to your attention the issue of the fees for the front of the court and the reimbursement to the state of Michigan. You may not fully understand the impact this potentially has on the county budget, but I do understand the ramifications involved on many different levels, financially and otherwise, which brings to mind the extra work that this would generate to my office, but I'll address that at another meeting. Something else about this is the wage study that is underway. Current employees are anticipating long-awaited and overdue pay increases. My question is that will this, will that possibility be affected by the purchase of the payroll system and the issue of filing fee reimbursement? I'm asking that you, as a board, stop and really think about the long-term impact your decision today about purchasing ADP is going to have on coming. In closing, the fact that no one is asking questions is a question in itself. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Just wanted to make a quick comment. I have concerns, not necessarily on the vital side, but I saw your side coming up, the presentation from the judges yesterday, I have concerns on the court side with all the front of the court filings, so I'm sure in a month or two we'll be having to deal with that, so.
I'll look at that.
So in response to Commissioner Masters' question observation, does it rise to the level that you're reconsidering supporting it at this time?
I don't think we know enough of how many, I mean, front of the court, how much funding, how much, you know, as Judge Clarkson Stewart mentioned yesterday, we don't really know the workload extent. Some of it's going to be obviously done by front of the court, they're talking about hiring somebody eventually, and it does end up in the clerk's office on the court side there, but there's a deputy and three employees on that side, or two employees, so, but.
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, the one thing that I, like, it's not just sort of a one-for-one shift here to provide the same function, it's enhanced services, there's a value add here, and it also potentially reduces our exposure to other liabilities and other areas of the function of this county, so.
I've also been, let's see, I've also been in counties that are two, three times the size of our office, and they have, they have smaller clerk's offices, so, and I go up to Vegas, I mean, the clerk, the clerk's at the desk, and there's two employees in that office, so.
Correct. So. Do you think that this $91,000 is a savings where that if we have to employ a full or part-time person into the careride's office, that we will be able to somehow budget that? Make it so that if. If we had to rebuild it and have a conversation on an additional employee in the vital records side, it's possible and it could be done, I feel like what we're doing right now is moving ourselves, you know. There's a cost to improving processes, there's a cost to covering up and buttoning up some issues we've never taken care of, I think this would be beneficial to the county in the long run, but we've implemented some new programs as far as our phones, you know, the impact of what our phones are going to save us over the next few years in accordance to what we've been paying, well, you know, is paying for itself, and this is another program like that. The cost of this, and the $91,000 is what everyone is so stuck on, you know, the $91,000 is something that can fluctuate, that's why, you know, they base this on the number of employees that work, they base it on the services that are provided, you know, the implementation of this program itself is only $1,800. So the $91,000 is just a big thing that's jumping out at everyone because it's a cost per employee. Well, that number's not bothering me. And the number, you know, the health department, you know, will pay, everybody that's involved will have a, will have a payment for, for their employees, so it's their only cost, you know, the health department wants to pitch in $25,000. I don't disagree with that or the person, I'm just, I just question, it's just that if she comes back to us in a couple months and they're struggling over there, and we need to put somebody in, back in the vital records to help with. We'll have to, yeah. You know, is there, we just thought that.
That's how I would express my support of what you're saying, is in a month, or in 45 days, you let us know what's happening on both sides, and if we have to, if we have to make adjustments, I don't know how long the front of the court stuff, how long that's going to take to end up up in your office, I don't know.
When they generate, may I speak? When they generate an order, it comes up immediately.
Yeah, but like, all the corrections stuff they have to do.
They're talking, we're going to be having a meeting, the judges, the all key players, and we have a meeting to talk about how we want to kind of do this, because initially they were talking about bringing up loans of orders, and we're like, ah, we can't do that, so.
That would be why they're providing themselves a town to help them with that. Be helping them on that end.
That's the front of the court.
But what we're going to do here, I think this is, goes back to Commissioner Cascarelli's concern that was stated, if there is an issue, if something does come up, we will have that conversation, we'll discuss that.
We've already done it for building and grounds this month, maybe extra help.
We'll see what we can do, I mean.
But I stress communication on both sides here.
It might just mean, I wanted to let you guys know that really is, I mean, I can't function because of it all, and you're taking people that are doing training, so, and you have someone starting July 3. But that's, you know, it's a busy place, I did not have time to gather figures for you to see how many birth, marriage, life, CPLs, passport, I mean, everything that we do on that side, I just did not have that, I apologize, but I did want to make it clear that statutorily, no, but providing service to the public, absolutely.
May I, just with respect to timing, then, if this is passed, what's the transition period by which, you know, software, the system's installed and those staff physically moved to?
July 1. 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 Should we discuss the possibility of a temp, or bring somebody in?
I just interviewed 12 people, I could, I could find someone, I mean, I just interviewed people for that side, I did have a B option, but that's.
Can we assume that she'll need somebody and come back with a proposal at the July meeting, or is it?
That's what I'm saying, so you have July, so then you've got some of those days are holiday days, the offices are going to be open, and we'll have our first, our first meeting start the 9th, and Monday the 9th, right? Monday the 10th.
But I have new persons starting July 3, I mean, I myself am so focused on the elections and other matters that are in that office, you know, how am I supposed to function?
Maybe we should talk more about this, but I mean, why, I guess, the question is, why do both the people that sit there now have to follow the new system, can a new person be hired and leave one person there in the office? In other words, rather than her starting from scratch again, this is a new system to be implemented, could not somebody be brought in, one person goes along with one new person to be hired to administer the system, and I'm just looking for potentials to address, I mean, I'm sensing there's going, there's going to be an issue, but I don't know enough.
Yeah, I would sunset too. We'll have to be the, well, we'll just have to address it next month, see what we come up with after this discussion again, let's plan on, looking forward to reevaluating to see what we have for that office and what we need, what we're going to need to keep in there, and go from there, but I don't think we should hold up our process and move this forward. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Doing that to item J, I move to authorize Resolution Number 17-06-14, authorize the board chair to ex, or rather, sign all necessary documents.
Support? The motion of support, any discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brock, make sure you speak up, because the digits stuck in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item K, I move to authorize the Owasso Community Airport multi-unit funding proposal for Chiawassee County for the years of 2018 through 2027, nine years, in annual amounts ranging from $6,678 in 2018, increasing to $10,725 in 2027, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, we have any discussion on the motion? We had a review of this yesterday, nothing more? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen? Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item L, I move to approve the minutes of the June 12, 2017 Finance and Administration Committee meeting.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Marks. We'll move to public safety court, Commissioner Brock.
I move to authorize Resolution 17-06-13, updating the Chiawassee County emergency closing policy and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support? Motion of support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say?
Motion carries.
Item B, I move to appoint Graham Sturgeon, representing media to the Community Corrections Advisory Board for a period of June 15, 2017 to December 31, 2018, or until his successor is appointed and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support, motion to support, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say?
Motion passed.
Item C, I would like to move to authorize Chiwasi County Central Dispatch to enter into a three-year lease agreement with MedSource One to purchase Dell Power Edge BRTX server storage, software and services that are required to sustain 9/11, or 9/11 emergency operations in the amount of $47,426.4 cents to be paid in 36 installments of $1,531,086 and authorize the board chair to sign all necessary documents.
Support, motion to support, any discussion? Pam, anything?
Commissioner, any more questions?
Anyone need anything? All right, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Casparelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen. Commissioner Barks.
Yes.
Commissioner McMastor.
Yes.
Chairman Root.
Yes, motion passes.
Item D, I move to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2017 Public Safety and Courts Committee meeting.
Support, motion to support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say?
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brock, we'll move to Health and Human Services, Commissioner McMastor.
Item A, I move to authorize Resolution Number 17-06-15, preserving the public mental health system as adopted by the Chiwasi County Community Mental Health Authority Board of Directors and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support, motion to support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say?
Motion passes.
Item B, I move to authorize the Chiwasi County Health Department to have a contract agreement with the Chiwasi RESD for information technology services in the amount of $225,000, $75,000 per year for the period of '07-01, 2017, to '06, 30, 2020, and authorize Larry Johnson, Health Director, to sign all necessary documents.
Support, motion to support, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Commissioner Holthausen. Commissioner Barks.
Yes.
Commissioner McMastor.
Yes.
Commissioner Casparelli.
Yes.
Chairman Root.
Yes, motion passes.
Good, item C, I move to appoint Cynthia Sivell to the Department of Health and Human Services Board effective immediately, 10/31/17, to finish the remaining term of a resigning board member, or until his successor is appointed and authorized the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support, motion to support, any discussion on the nomination? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say?
Motion passes.
Item D, I move to appoint Marion Gordon to the Solid Waste Management Committee, representing solid waste regional planning for a period of 6-15-17 to 12-31-18, or until his successor is appointed and authorized the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support, motion to support, any discussion on this appointment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say?
Motion passes.
Item E, I move to appoint Les Schneider to the Veterans Affairs Committee for the period of June 15, 2017 through December 31, 2018, or until his successor is appointed and authorized the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
The motion is second, we have any discussion on this appointment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item F, I move to appoint Michael Nations to the Veterans Affairs Committee for the period of June 15, 2017 through December 31, 2018, or until his successor is appointed and authorized the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion on this appointment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes.
Item G, I move to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2017 Health and Human Services Committee meeting.
Support, motion to support, any discussion on minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say?
Motion passes.
Those concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner McMastor, chairperson at this time, the only thing I have to bring before us would be, if anyone's read the paper today, they know that as of 4:30 today, Rich Warner is no longer the Emergency Services Coordinator for Chiwasi County. The Sheriff's Department has been overseeing that since January. We do need to get something out as far as refilling that, I do believe the sheriff is working with others. Brian, you want to, Alyssa?
That's correct, I reached out to the Ingham County Sheriff, Scott Regalsworth and the Livingston County Sheriff, Mike Murphy. Both of them have agreed to allow their emergency managers to assist us in any fashion that comes up, so. In the meantime, I'd like to start a search to fill that position.
So, I would entertain a motion to bring that up, just so we could advertise and start the process, it hasn't gone through committee.
No second then?
I was asleep at the wheel, I, I would need someone to make the motion.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Which is what?
To what?
The motion would be to approve the sheriff's office to start a search to replace former emergency management coordinator.
Okay. And I would totally disagree at this time, we have to, what kind of scope is this person going to do? Full-time, part-time, you know?
Salary.
Salary, who's paying what, we, you know, there has to be way more discussion on this before this can be brought up and voted on.
Maybe we'll have discussion now, do we want to wait with no emergency manager for a month, or two, or three, or 15?
There's only one last month.
So, maybe we just sit here and we whip that out right now? It's what's best for the team.
I understand, we, you know, I mean, we can't, what are we voting on? We have nothing that, you know, there's got to be some sort of criteria.
It shouldn't be harder. Well, we have a job description, we have a salary, we have education qualifications, we have.
I'm saying, if we have that and I'm just unaware of it, that's fine, we just, you know what I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not trying to hold anything up, I'm not trying to be difficult, but it's just, I just feel we, we can't just go boom, boom, and it's done, we need to have a little discussion here, so.
Well, it's not creating a brand-new position, the position's been there, so obviously there's a job description.
It's not a great area back and forth for, you know, a couple of years.
36 hours, $42,000. 49.5, 49, that's 30, 34, 34 hours right now, currently, 34, 49.5.
So, everything would be.
I would recommend that it be returned to a full-time position, so, but it would, would be an increase in hours there.
What are you saying, you wouldn't, you wouldn't?
No, I would recommend that it is returned to that.
That's why you left, because we wouldn't do that, so why would we do it now?
Well, I think the, the quality of candidate that it's going to attract probably would be helpful. If it's only a part-time position, it's going to be, it's going to limit our, who's going to apply for the job to begin with, and I think that's, that's one that early ties us people, we want the best person for the job. There's a number of people already that have heard about it and are reaching out, and at this point in time, I'm not able to do anything, other than.
Do we, do we pay for this 100% or just federal money?
It's federal dollars, I know, it costs you.
Your sum, or?
About 66% is funded, we pay it third. But what it is, is we pay it, and we return reports at the end of the year, it's not like we just get the funding right away, you know, we've got to, we've got to provide the workspace with very heavy, we've got to provide an emergency operations center with very heavy, you know. So, it'll be 66, but it's all dependent on the stuff that hits reports to the state, and then it's kind of, you pay it, and then they reimburse.
I think the, the ad could possibly reflect something, you know, on the pay and benefits is negotiable or something like that, that way we're not setting, or something. My biggest concern is to, is to start getting people, you know, to apply and, and start waiting through those applications, so.
Can we say not to exceed the current salary issued for a full-time individual, or is that hamstring us in recruiting the best candidates?
Chairman?
How much is it?
41.
45.
What are our, what are our lucky finish rules at right now? 50, 55? So, we don't want, that brings up an issue right there, we want them to be paid more than.
There are a lot of issues. Couple of months?
Yeah, the full-time maximum's a $58,000 salary.
I mean, at one time, he was full-time and we had a, a emergency coordinator paid 100% by the federal government, and the board decided to do away with that, so, I guess I'm not seeing the reasoning in why we changed today.
And previously, it was based on a lieutenant's salary at the sheriff's department, if that, maybe a.
Are they always, because lieutenant, right?
40.
So, so you're saying what the?
I just say that could be, there could be a guideline or baseline, you could, you could, set it at the current lieutenant's salary at the sheriff's office.
I guess we got to decide, Commissioner Barks has some concerns, do we, do we go ahead now, or do we, do we do it that month? I know the sheriff, you know, the sheriff doesn't want to, you know, can't be the one doing this, you know, he's going to have to reach out to more people to kind of help him out, but what is, I mean, it's up to the board, it's no one decision, so.
And when we do it with other elected officials in a situation like this, when you do the motions as the amount of money or the range, whatever, the rise schedule range or whatever. So, in fairness, we should probably have that unless, unless we have them to start the process, but.
I thought that's what the motion was, was to start the process, we're not saying.
Right on, I agree.
Hire them, we're not saying, we're not setting salary, we're not setting benefits, we're not setting anything. All we're saying is we're allowing the search.
So, if you never tell us, you just say?
Could be based on experience or whatever.
And then don't draw any dollar amount, or?
I mean, he's got to come back to us anyway to approve it.
Well, yeah, this is just going to simply start the process, candidates are involved, candidates are attracted, and they're already getting some interest from what it sounds like.
Here, so, here in a minute.
If he can, if he can get those people lined up, maybe he can have interviews and start discussing things, or at least he has an allotment of candidates to come for us next month before he makes a decision.
It's the same thing that we've had this discussion before, you know, if we, if we get good candidates and we drag our feet, we lose the good candidates. If you have some candidates that you have in mind, I would hate to see that go by the wayside because we said, no, we don't think you better start looking you at.
This is probably, we don't know if it's, right now it's part-time, where discussions open, if it's going to be full-time.
Well, that's something that we'll, let's advertise, let's start a search, and then let's collectively as a board determine with our budget director, you know, what we think's best for us, is it best to just stay at 49? And leave it part-time, and we decide we want to go back to, you know, we already missed the opportunity to plan it, we're not getting that. We can reapply next year for a full-time identity, so that's, everything's done for the year now, and that's done. So, if we go back to it, is it something we go back to part-time now and look at budget time? I mean, it's all up to the, the board, simply start the process now and then we can work with sheriff, work with Patty, discuss exactly where we want to go with it in terms of hours, and, I mean, it's all up to them, everybody wants to.
Are you, are you?
Yes, yes.
You have a set?
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I just want to interject a little bit of what I just experienced in interviewing 12 candidates. And three people withdrew their resume, withdrew because of the pay, and then when I made offers, I had four people to, for each side basically turn me down, so it's been a painful experience. I'm just going to say that, you know, I'm hopeful that the way we still will do something, but listening to you guys, it's like, it's really problematic for our county. 12 people, that took a lot of time.
I know, I know.
My question on your, your candidates, I mean, they may or may not have experience, but what is your, what's your assessment of an appropriate pay scale, or are we, are we close, are we way off the mark, are we, are we?
From, from what I've heard, I mean, we're off, it's underpaid, so, you know, I think if, if it was to increase to full-time and the pay came up, at least, you know, comparable to some of the wages at the sheriff's department, that it would probably get some qualified individuals, maybe somebody who's already been an emergency manager, they're in retirement and they're, you know, willing to come back, you know, something like that, so.
Would it be costly to give some information on counties of a similar size in, in that position, what they're currently are paid? To give us sort of a reference?
We can, we can call back and they'll, they'll be able to do that and pull those numbers for us. I can already, I can already tell you, it'll be 15, 20,000 hundred for comparable counties.
Well, I'd just like to see that. Yeah, I know, I know.
I'm trying to think of that Marquette study we just had, and we were, we weren't that far off. After the Marquette wage study, we were involved in, we were not that far off.
You also need to, it depends, what you, what, probably went into the comparables is you can't fiscalize population. You have to do, I mean, you can't do a hundred thousand different, but.
This was done by municipal consultants, this was a, a process that was.
Also too good to live in Marquette.
Yeah, I just want a sort of a frame of reference is all, I mean.
Paul Rees, you know, whatever.
I actually related to some of the duties put in, from what, from what I observed the last six months, but.
Well, I would.
Maybe it will be performed, but I don't.
I think one of my, my big goals is, I think we all agree that the emergency manager does a lot of train, 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 and we were implementing a, a program with Rich when he turned his resignation, his out, to put some of that training to use. We were asking him to come up with a county-wide plan, a response plan for something, whether it be an active shooter in a school or a factory or something, in, in order to try to get all the entities working together, fire police, ambulance, and things like that, because that hasn't been done yet. So, that, that is the intention, that there will be add duties and it'll be a pretty big undertaking, so.
So, would you be satisfied if we authorized you to go ahead and start recruiting candidates with the limited information you have?
Absolutely, that's, that's all, I, I just, I don't want to lose a month and put us behind, and I think it's nice enough that the Ingham County Sheriff and Livingston County Sheriff have said that they'll, they'll support us and reach out if we need something, but I don't, I don't know, it's 30 days on, on possible applicants that we could interview anyway.
Commissioner Barks, is that?
Yeah, I just think it has to be advertised as part, as part-time, 34 hours, whatever, I don't see how we can fire, pretty much fire somebody, because that's what we did, we forced him out.
We didn't fire.
We forced him out, and then all of a sudden, here they come, somebody doing.
All right. So, what's the priority of the board, what do we, what do we want to do?
I would like to make a motion that we authorize Sheriff Gold to begin the process in replacing.
Well, I believe that's on the table, was that the same by?
It's the same, Mark, it's the same motion.
I believe the same thing, start the, start the search. Search process will be contingent on still coming back to us for the final determining what we can do. I mean, how do you feel about approaching salary, if you're interviewing someone and they say, what am I being paid, I mean?
I, I would say that it may be, you know, negotiable and based on experience and things like that too, so, I'm not going to, I'll tell them what the current, what it currently pays, and we're hoping that, you know, if it increases in hours, it will be an increase in pay also, but nothing's guaranteed, so.
Okay.
It'll be open.
So, we'll sell it as right now at the part-time wage, the 49.5, and there could be an opportunity. And it could stay, it could stay part-time to the remainder of the year, again, like you said, look at the budget, maybe the position goes full-time next year, I, I don't know, there's a lot of options to look at, but I think the process starting now is important.
I support the motion.
Do we?
We did get a second from Commissioner Brock.
Okay, all right. So, motion from Commissioner Mark, so a second, support by Commissioner Brock, start the process and still end up bringing it back to us next month for final review?
Yeah, just with the caveat, there's nothing definite, and it's pretty loose, but if that gives him enough to, not lose out on potential candidates, we should move forward, that's an important position. Details to be discussed later.
Yeah. Do you have anything else? Okay, so that's all right, that's good. All right. Should I roll call that, Ed, roll call, all in favor, what are we going to do there?
They're doing all in favor.
Okay, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, any other agenda items at this time, from anyone? Nothing, second opportunity for the public to speak, no cards, anyone stepping up? No?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, I'm sure Mike, Nations, and I, we are going to do our best to get along and do what's good for the best.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We know you will. Just one second. Mr. Miller, do you want to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. If you would go to County Finance and Administration, K, all those airport contracts are for 10 years. You may have a misprint by putting in nine. And if you looked at.
Actually, this coming year stays the same. When Rick was here yesterday, right? It's only for nine years, because this year it's staying the same.
So we're not paying through, we've already had the contract for 10 years to go through law of 2,000 and I wasn't even.
And they agree, and they agreed to go 11 years instead of 10 on it.
All right. That is a big pickup. Thank you.
Thank you.
My act.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, they're staying the same for the 11th year, but the contract will only be for nine years, is how Mr. Monson presented it.
Okay.
Thank you for the catch, though. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Just one, just one second. Do you have anything else?
Well, I noticed the airport on the agenda and just thought you would want to know that I just met with the airport manager this week and I'm really excited at the possibilities of creating some transportation options so that we can get people to fly in and shuttle them in our community and then they can fly in, so.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Is there a number that's been allocated to the UPRA and the buying cost of the 911 dispatch building and all of it?
Uh, 600? What's your question?
What's the overall amount that's been spent?
610,000?
And that, does that incorporate in the 381, 3 whatever and 40?
That's her budget. That's a separate situation. That's not her building fund that she's using the building. That's just stuff she needs now for her building. That's stuff she already has in her budget that's being moved to another line item. That's already budgeted money that she gets. The building's been paid for. The renovations are being paid for. Everything on the building is paid at this point. We're just paying off parent as we go through the contract. The next generation equipment's been purchased. The software is going to be installed. The new server will be there, so everything's moving forward. Anything else? Appreciate it. Tim, you got anything? Good articles in the paper. Appreciate it. Anything else? All right. This time, let's check this agenda. Here we are, Chairman.